Everybody good? Cynthia, you ready? No, got a bus stopping. It's like done like this. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Township Council Meeting, Monday, January 28, 2019. Mayor Post, would you please lead this chamber in Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Kraus, please read the statement of public notice.
Take notice that this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA 104-8 and NJSA 104-10 as follows. The notice of meeting was promptly posted on both two words of Municipal Orleans and motioned at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on January 2nd, 2019. A copy of the notice was mailed to the North Jersey Carol Dune in the record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the Office of the Township Clerk on said date.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Roll call, Mrs. Kraus. Call the roll call for attendance, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Cordenair, Councilmember Quaid.
President.
Councilmember Seber.
President.
Councilmember Menchery.
President.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cordenair.
Yes.
Councilmember Quaid.
Yes.
Councilmember Seber.
Yes.
Councilmember Menchery.
Yes.
Councilwoman Seber, your report.
Thank you. So we have started the municipal alliance, glad to see that we have our funding on the agenda tonight, so hopefully that will pass. And right now, we have started the LEEDs program for our seventh graders, our fifth and seventh graders. We also have our B.A.E.S. program in order to the second and fourth graders in school, one and three. So we're very excited to continue those programs and hopefully to continue the funding so that we can make our children better aware of drug and alcohol abuse in our community. Thank you.
Councilwoman Quaid.
Thank you. This week, I'll be meeting with some members of the Little Falls Fizz Association in regards to kicking off our Little Falls Green Initiative and the recyclable bags that we talked about in the last meeting and the Domestic Violence Prevention Committee we'll be meeting next week.
Councilwoman Menchery.
Sure, thank you. Just a couple of updates in terms of Transportation Committee. We're planning to meet on Tuesday, February 8th, our first meeting of the year. We've been going back and forth this month trying to find a date to see if we can work out since the start of February. The other thing that we did too was we reached out through the help of the county to the DOT. There were some concerns, I know the police department have been trying, as well as myself and some other members, about the striding on the Route 46 entrance along the McBride Ave exit. And we were able to sort of have a conversation finally, could we send emails with the requests? They are going to repaint the line hopefully soon. And then I also reached out to the DOT today because underneath that bridge, unfortunately, someone decided to write some four-letter graffiti all over the wall there. So we spoke to the DOT and they're honored to send someone out, hopefully painted this week to cover up what's there, unfortunately.
Councilwoman Cordenair.
Thank you. I'm going to be sending out a notice for the, our Open Space Committee to meet on September, excuse me, on February 5th. The Open Space Committee will meet monthly on the first Wednesday of the month. We will call extra meetings as projects evolve or reviewed is necessary. And after we have that meeting, I think I'll have more to report for Open Space. On the Senior Advisory Committee, the committee is really working hard. They've met a few times already in order to really solidify, solidify a whole year's event calendar. I'm very excited about that and about the whole idea of expanding education and learning for our seniors. I asked the mayor if we can add on our town website an area for our Senior Advisory Committee so that seniors looking on the website can find information from the committee. And I'm also going to talk to the committee about how do we also sub-brand ourselves in order to bring more people to the events and then to some of the really great things we're going to be doing for a whole continuation of lifelong learning. So stay tuned, I think there's going to be a lot of great stuff coming out of the senior committee. Thank you.
Thank you. The library is getting their automatic doors replaced. That work will go from Monday through Thursday. And they are also working with Chief Post for security initiatives. Mayor Dan Anno.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, we have a number of things on our agenda, first of which I am truly honored to be here to do this evening. And it is the streaming in of our Fire Chief, Chief Jack Sweets, who is now entering his 42nd year here in Little Falls as a firefighter and entering his 4th term and now going into his 10th year here in Little Falls as our Fire Chief. I'm going to ask Chief Sweets and his family to join me up here for the streaming.
I'm Jack Sweets Jr.
I'm Jack Sweets Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And the government established in the United States.
And the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Have you further solemnly sworn?
Have you further solemnly sworn?
That I will impartially.
That I will impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of Fire Chief.
Of Fire Chief.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I want to thank everyone in attendance here this evening, especially Mayor, Council, business administrator, and the township employees who I work with every day, family and friends, mutual aid chiefs that are in the room, thank you, appreciate it. Officers and firefighters, thank you for your continued support. It's an honor to serve in the capacity of Chief of the Department in the Township of Little Falls daily. And when I say, as you can see, I get a little emotional over it because I take it to heart. When you have a hundred guys and women that work their tails off day in and day out for the community, it means a lot to me and it means a lot to the town and I know that. You know, I have a lot of people to thank. I know each and every one of you in this room have touched me over my life in some way, shape, or form. From a young kid growing up, I seen Mrs. Dillon in the audience, my Cub Scout leader, den mother. It's always a pleasure to be in her company and I thank you for everything you brought where I'm at today. My friends Danny Janusso, oh yeah, Michael Burke, President of Fire Department. I can't thank you guys enough for continued support. Jeff Altongi, Assistant Chief, who's 2-0 this year, 3-0 is Paul Hozak, 3-0 is James DiMaria, I'm sorry, 3-0 is Paul Hozak, 4-0 is James DiMaria, and 5-0 is the one and only Chris Malletta. I think he's going to be getting a volunteer pension off being 5-0 for all the years he served as 5-0 under me. And it's a pleasure to work with all of them every day. And 6-0 is Deputy Chief Pomponio. So at this time, I just want to thank everyone again for your attendance and I appreciate you being here and coming from my company, Company Three. I can't thank you guys enough for continued support and believing in what we get done every day. So there are some refreshments afterwards at Company Three. For those that want to join us after your meeting, please do so. Thank you very much for everything.
Joe, we're throwing a Sing Act for refreshments, you're more than welcome.
Oh, you're allowed to cross that border? Good luck to you. Many happy years.
Thank you.
This evening, we also had a proclamation for Ronnie Carrato, who is not able to join us here. She was actually presented with this proclamation at the most recent Unico meeting, or big actually event that they had this year, this past weekend. And we just want to thank her for everything that she has done to honorably serve Unico since 2006 on many of their committees and for being an active member there. So we'd like to thank her and extend our appreciation. All right. And this evening is one of my favorite evenings that I've been able to experience here as mayor in the township of Little Falls. And it's the evening that I get to present the annual State of the Township. It's something that I enjoy because it really lets me sit down and think back over what we've done and accomplished here in Little Falls over the prior year. And it allows me to really sit down and consider what my goals are and what we would like to achieve here as mayor and council of the township in Little Falls in the years to come. So with that said, I'm ready to present my State of the Township. This evening is January 28, 2019. First and foremost, as I stated last year, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the residents of Little Falls and of this great town for providing me with the opportunity to serve as your mayor. I remain humbled by the support and encouragement I receive on a daily basis from the residents who are pleased with the direction of the municipality over the past two years. And I hope everyone will bear with me over these next few minutes as I present my second State of the Township. I would like to also take this opportunity to congratulate Councilman Chris Menchery and Councilwoman Tanya Seber on their success in their reelection, as well as Councilman Quaid on his election to the Little Falls Council. I am confident that with their support, the residents of Little Falls will continue to see the progress continue that has been started over these past couple of years. I would also like to congratulate Councilman Anthony Scoba on his selection to serve as Council President. And I would like to thank Councilwoman Maria Cordenair for her continued dedication to this township. I would also like to thank Councilman Bill Lees for all of his years of service to this township and his continued dedication to our senior community. 2018 was a busy year here in Little Falls. And I, along with this council, have no intentions of slowing down in 2019. As I drive down Main Street, I'm thrilled to see that our once-empty storefronts and streets are now filled with booming businesses and lively residents. That said, I'd like to take a look back at some of the accomplishments and highlights that were achieved in 2018. I'm thrilled to announce that in 2018, the township saw its first tax decrease in nearly two decades, and residents will notice a slight tax decrease over this upcoming year. I'm hopeful that this is only a sign of what's to come over the next several years as we further the revitalization of Little Falls. In 2018, the township received in excess of $900,000 in grant funding, the highest amount of funding received by the township in a calendar year, a portion of which was, which was the largest Department of Transportation grant ever received by the township of $600,000. This occurred while the township maintained its investment-grade bond rating of A2. In 2018, the township has also continued to work with developers towards revitalizing, upgrading, and enhancing our township in a positive direction, which is simultaneously helping to ensure the financial future of our township. Completing the Sing Act redevelopment plan and initiating the Town Center redevelopment study are just some of the many ways that we have worked to revitalize our township. Developments such as Autumn Point and the former Paulo Abbey site have been built or in the process of being built. These new developments will bring much-needed ratables to the township and, once completed, will assist in expanding our tax base. In 2018, the township hired a new construction official, James DiMaria, who will provide much-needed oversight as we move forward with all of the development throughout the town. Last year, I announced that action would finally be taken on the site of our former municipal building and police station after sitting vacant for over a decade. And this past year, the township posted a request for proposals and, for the former municipal building and as its first step towards modernizing that property as we strive to continue to bring the curb appeal back to Little Falls. As we modernize and revitalize our town center and the demand for downtown parking continues to grow at an exponential rate, in 2018, the township invested in expanding our downtown parking to continue to strive to meet the needs of our town center. In 2018, the township, in conjunction with Woodland Park and Totowa, reorganized a regional flood board to assist in addressing the flood-related issues that the township faces. The township also had its first, I'm sorry, had its 2018 CRS program recertified, which assists our residents in securing far lower flood insurance rates. Just this past week, I'm proud to announce that the township, in conjunction with Woodland Park, received an excavator through a grant which will be used to clean the Peckman and Passaic rivers and their contribuatories to keep them clean of debris and rocks in an effort to reduce the risk of future floods. I've worked closely with the Army Corps of Engineers to develop a plan that will address and hopefully eliminate flooding caused by the Peckman River. With respect to traffic throughout our township, there have been concerns raised regarding the congestion in the center of town, especially during rush hour. Some of you, especially those traveling from the Sing Act section of town, may have recognized the congestion as you approach Stevens Ave has great, has been greatly alleviated as a result of the timing of the traffic lights being modified to better address the flow of traffic during rush hour. It's these small, somewhat unrecognizable issues, which seem so minor in concept that take a great effort in conjunction with the county and state organizations to assist in addressing the concerns of the residents of Little Falls and me and this administration work each day towards just that. Our Little Falls library has a new, a new library director, and I need to thank our former director, Christine Miller, and welcome our new library director, Christine Blumberg. Our library is currently in the process of installing upgraded ADA accessible doors and improving the flooring in our library entranceway. In 2017, the township introduced our online payment of everyone's favorite thing, taxes, by e-check to assist our residents with an instant and hassle-free payment of their taxes right from the convenience of their home. And in 2018, we have eliminated the lockbox system which numerous residents expressed concerns with in an effort to make tax payments as effortless as possible. This council and I also remain dedicated to our promise of transparency. And in furtherance of that goal, I will be holding several formal but informal town hall style meetings over the course of 2019 to discuss and address the concerns of the residents in a far less formal environment than standard council meetings permit. The township has also begun live streaming all council meetings on YouTube to make residents' accessibility to the meetings effortless from the convenience of one's home. In 2018, the township has continued its partnership with the Clifton Health Department, who continue to provide exceptional health and animal services to our residents. In 2018, the township has also taken active steps towards protecting its digital infrastructure in light of the countless municipalities that have been the subject of cyber attacks and expensive recovery processes. With respect to our Police Department, in 2018, the Little Falls Police Department, led by Chief Steve Post, was awarded an accreditation as a department after a grueling three-year application process. This means that the Police Department has proven that best practices are being followed and as a result, insurance costs of the township are lower because the liability the township faces as a result of these best practices being followed has been reduced. In 2018, in response to residents' needs, the Police Department introduced its first full-time traffic officer to meet the needs of the residents who have expressed concerns such as speeding. The traffic officer is able to perform duties such as traffic studies and speed studies to provide the department with a greater ability to maximize the safety of our roadways. The Police Department is all, the Police Department has also continued its efforts with the community policing. And the township continues to have a full-time community policing officer. The Police Department now also has police substations in all of our schools here in Little Falls, which our officers utilize to complete their reports during the school day rather than utilizing the police headquarters. This puts additional officers in our schools at random hours of the day to further provide a level of security and safety to our schools by increasing the police presence. Our community policing officer, Corporal John Vanek, organized Little Falls' first national night out. It was a huge success despite the weather being somewhat uncooperative, which we hope to have grow year after year. Our community policing officer also organized the township's first Toys for Tots drive, which delivered over 800 gifts to children in need. In 2018, the Little Falls Police Department became just the second town in Passaic County to issue tasers to its officers, which provides our officers a less-than-lethal alternative to address a potentially dangerous situation. By way of statistics, in 2018, the Little Falls Police Department traveled 154,358 miles. To put that in perspective, that's enough miles to travel around the earth 6.1 times. They performed over 400 school walkthroughs, almost 1,000 school arrival and dismissal safety assignments, responded to over 6,450 911 calls, stopped 6,950 vehicles, wrote 8,500 reports, and performed over 1,000 radar posts while risking their lives each day for our safety and, most importantly, while maintaining the positive attitude that our officers display each and every day. The Police Department continues its movement towards a greener department as we limit the amount of idle time the police, while we limit, sorry, as we limit the amount of idle time of the police vehicles. Just an incredible job by our Police Department and I'm proud to have them here in the town that I call home. In 2019, our Police Department will continue to pursue its accreditation, another rigorous three-year process, all while developing a drone program to better assist officers in searches and safety. In 2019, the township also intends to further expand its traffic officer program so that our roadways remain as safe as possible. In 2018, the Fire Department, led by Department Chief Jack Sweets, who was just elected to another three-year term as Department Chief, has continued its full-time paid EMS service, which has substantially reduced response times for our emergency medical responders, saving lives. Our Fire Department, through our paid EMS program, cost the township no more money than our volunteer service did when response time and service was substantially delayed. The township purchased two new ambulances in a 2017 package deal with Patterson, which greatly reduced the cost of each ambulance due to the large quantity order. And those ambulances were put into service in this past year in 2018. Over the 2018 calendar year, the Little Falls Fire Department continued to expand its rapid entry system program, and we now have more commercial and residential buildings with emergency knox box keys for quick entry by our Fire Department and emergency responders. This past year, the Little Falls Fire Department responded to a total of 572 alarms and the Little Falls EMS responded to a total of 1,559 medical emergency calls for assistance, for a total of 2,131 emergency calls, not to mention the non-emergency calls that our Fire Department responded to, including their assistance to the residents and pumping out their basements following the August 11th flood. There were four active fires in Little Falls in 2018 where the Fire Department had to work for an extended period of time to mitigate the emergency. Most importantly, all of these emergencies were addressed without any substantial injury or loss of life. 2019 marks the 115th anniversary of the Little Falls Fire Department, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of our members for all that they do each and every day as they are always prepared to respond to a fire. Our DPW has also been busy in 2018, led by DPW Superintendent Phil Simone. In 2018, Duva Field began displaying its new state-of-the-art LED athletic lights, which not only more adequately lit the fields, but did so at a cost savings to the town with the new LED lighting. This project was largely funded with grants from Passaic County Open Space Trust Fund dollars, which this council and I will continue to pursue to assist in providing upgrades and improvements to our parks and open space to offset the increased cost to our residents. The new state-of-the-art LED lights throughout Wilmore Park are now installed and they look incredible, especially during the holiday season. This will allow our summer concert goers to also have some additional light in the early evening. These new lights also help to enhance the Mars Canal Greenway that runs parallel with the park, providing some much-needed light along the canal path. In 2018, the township has continued its road resurfacing program, which was suspended under prior administrations as we strive to bring all of our roadways up to date. This past year, the Jackson Park area of town had most of its roadways resurfaced. This happened in conjunction with the PSE&amp;G gas main upgrades that are ongoing throughout the township through a partnership with PSE&amp;G to ensure that the roadways that were in need of the entire roadway being repaved got just that, rather than a roadway where only half of the road was paved. This council and I are dedicated to ensuring that our damaged roads are repaved and that our infrastructure does not fail us. This year, the DPW purchased a new compactor truck to replace our former truck, which was several decades old. The township also began taking active steps to improve our Fairfield Ave pump station that services a good portion of the Sing Act section of town. As everyone is aware, this year, unfortunately, our township was hit with a flash flood on the day, on a day that I will never forget, August 11th, 2018. On that day and for the weeks following the flood, our DPW put everything on hold to assist all of the residents who were affected by the flood and removed all of the debris and household items that our residents were removing from their homes on a daily basis. Our DPW helped bring the normalcy back to this section of our town for which I owe them my gratitude. On a lighter note, the Little Falls DPW continues to be second to none when it comes to cleaning roads after a snowstorm. I'm certain that everyone remembers the November snowstorm that brought almost the entire state to a halt. Well, not here in Little Falls. The Little Falls DPW had the roadways in Little Falls down to the blacktop before other towns even had a plow on the road. As a result of this storm and after discussions with the county, the township has now partnered even closer with the county, and now the county salt truck will no longer have to go back to the county facility to be refilled with salt, but rather will stay in Little Falls and the township will fill the truck during the storm, which the county will replenish following the storm. This means our county roads will be cleaner than ever and getting more attention than they ever have in the past because the county plow and salt truck will stay right here in Little Falls during the entirety of the storm. Our parks and recreation facilities have also had some major improvements made to them, and I need to thank our Rec Director, John Pace, for his oversight of our Recreation Department. Our Civic Center, which houses our senior services and town hall style meetings, recently had a new sound system installed to better had a new sound system installed to better tend to the needs of our residents. We have also received a grant to install a new ADA accessible ramp and door in the rear of the civic center, which will be designed and installed in 2019. In 2019, the tennis courts will have new LED lights installed to bring our courts up to par to play tennis at night, and in 2019, the township is excited to be installing what will be the first pickable courts anywhere in the surrounding area. The rec department also initiated a community pass system, which will allow all payments for recreation activities to be made online, and this will also assist with the scheduling and the usage of our fields. In 2019, I look forward to continuing to improve our parks, civic center, and recreation facilities by installing modern audio systems at Duva Field, the Recreation Center, and Wilmore Park. We can also look forward to new dugouts and batting cages, which will be installed over the course of this summer at Duva Field. Little Falls will also be taking on a green initiative this year as we work towards a greener and more sustainable Little Falls. This is a Little Falls that I hope we are and can all be proud of, especially as we move forward over the years to come. I would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank all of the employees of this township who work so hard each and every day to keep this town up and running, especially our business administrator, Chuck Kucia, who is my right-hand man on a day-to-day basis here in Town Hall, and our township clerk, Cynthia Kraus, who keeps our clerk's office running smoothly. Finally, I want to thank all of you for placing your trust in me as your mayor and for your overwhelming support over the past two years. I have truly enjoyed each day that I have been fortunate enough to serve as your mayor. I look forward to the next two years of this term and what is in store for the township. As I have stated in the past, if you ever have any issues, no matter how big or small, no matter day or night, I invite you to contact me by phone, email, text message, Facebook, Instagram, even Snapchat. I hope I've made everyone proud of the 2018 that we've all had here in Little Falls, and I look forward to continue to serve as your mayor in 2019. Thank you, everyone, for indulging me this year in my state of the township.[735.82][735.82][applause]
Thank you, Mayor, for your thorough state of the township report. Counselor Wenzel, do you have anything for the governing body?
Not at this point.
Kavanaugh motion, second, to open the meeting to the public for general matters only.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed this motion signify by saying nay. Motion passes. Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the township council, may do so with the council president. Please give your name and address from the record, comments, or deliberated agreement. However appropriate, may you address your individual time and sole discretion of the council president.
The floor is open.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr.
My name is Luis Fernandez, 54 Harrington Street. I was just reading over some of the ordinances that they're going to be voted on this evening, and I noticed, I think it's, to amend chapter 151, the last ordinance, 1344. I noticed that the times have changed drastically from 5:30 until 8 o'clock. When I read it online, it said 9 o'clock, just at the door, the one that I picked up the door, it says 8 o'clock. I was wondering who picks these hours, number one. Number two, what accreditations does anybody that solicits a canvassing permit in Little Falls need to bring to the police department or anything like that? And the reason I'm saying is because I once had a canvassing permit in Clifton. Not only I was fingerprinted, they needed some IDs, and they limited the time of canvassing as well, but it was during the day. Most towns don't want any canvassing at night because of the dangers that is involved in ringing the bell at night, naturally. So when you say 8 o'clock or 9 o'clock, to me, it's a dangerous, 8 o'clock at night, it's dark. I mean, you can see it tonight. Can you see it? I'm sure you can. But anyway, so I don't know what was wrong with canvassing or knocking on the door after 5 o'clock that needs to be extended at 8 o'clock. What does the township gain by those two and a half hours, other than the residents being a risk? What does the township gain?
Mr. Fernandez, I addressed your question, and you are correct. It was initially at 9 o'clock. By having discussions with the mayor and the council, that was moved to 8 o'clock. As far as how do we derive to those hours, I'm going to ask the council to weigh in on, and then the mayor, about some legal matters concerning this. Counselor?
Okay, so just to be clear, this is something that isn't necessarily initiated by the council. This is a result of various cases that were brought in various jurisdictions by canvassers and solicitors against ordinances like ours that had originally, it was a 5 o'clock standard. And they consistently have won. Courts have said that it is, in essence, unconstitutional for the township to limit them to those hours. So the court cases have said that the time has to be extended to a time in which these people can actually contact people who are coming home from work. So that's where the 9 o'clock originally came from, because that's from several court cases that have said that 9 o'clock is the appropriate time. Now, you should also know, with regard to the other point about what do we do in terms of checking these people. Little Falls has, prior to this change, and there's no change in this, but this is the way it's going to continue to be, Little Falls goes through, end canvasser or solicitor has to make an application to the police department. They have to be fingerprinted. There has to be review done by the chief of police, or his designated background of that person, criminal background, also in general, moral background, see if there's been any prior complaints about this person or this group. And that's more extensive, quite honestly, than many other towns. Some other towns don't have, I know you referenced one that Clifton does, but many other towns don't have fingerprinting requirement, which the chief was very vociferous in supporting, and I agree with that. You know, obviously, it's his call in terms of law enforcement and public safety. Many towns don't do that. So when you talk about what do we do to protect, I think those protections have been there, have always been there, and will continue to be there under this new ordinance.
Does the council have any comments concerning the questions that Mr. Fernandez raised? Mayor, would you like to have some input here?
Sure. This was an ordinance that, somewhat to council's dismay, it was something that needed to address. And I say that because I think in theory, most of the council would agree with you in my separate conversations with them. The issue here was really making sure that the township is protected from a liability perspective, particularly from a taxpayer conscientious perspective. I say that because leaving an ordinance as is, that you know is susceptible to challenging court, may result in expensive counsel fees being incurred. As much as I like Joe and his attorney, I'd prefer to that the residents of Little Falls can put their own children through justice rather than handing the only one who's able to do it. So this is something that is done more as a defensive measure to protect us and insulate us from future liability and lawsuits, despite some of us having personal feelings contrary to the norm.
The fears, could they be security fears, putting the taxpayers, the residents of Little Falls, in danger? Can you address that?
Yes, absolutely. So these are individuals who have gone through extensive hardship checks, through fingerprints, and prior complaints about them would be noted in document. So while the taxpayers may have concerns, it's not, there's no obligation or responsibility to open a door for someone who is at your door late in the evening. But as far as being in danger, I think if you're also limiting that by the background check that we are having before and during the day. I'm sorry, by the wireless.
Will this person be wearing an ID tag, a Little Falls ID tag, with his picture?
All solicitors are required to have on display their soliciting badge that is provided to them through our police.
With a picture?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Fernandez? Thank you for your time this evening. The floor is open.
Bob Nebraska, Three Gardens. Actually, you answered. He asked.
I'm sorry, Mr. Nebraska. Just repeat your address for the record.
Oh, Three Gardens Street.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
This call I've gotten for like two months.
No problem, sir.
There's this, there are exemptions to this. Isn't there religious groups, political groups? Are they still conform to them hours or no? Like, just like your example, religious groups, are they still, are they obligated to get that ID or no? No, I don't think.
No, there are exemptions. For instance, if we're campaigning, if political groups are campaigning, no, that doesn't fall into this realm.
Yeah, and religious groups as well. Okay.
You're welcome. The floor is still open?
Dorothy O'Hair, Turnberry Road.
Good evening.
I have two questions. The first thing is, I really agree with Mr. Fernandez, and I understand your answer. I have a question for the police chief, though, or for the township attorney. Suppose, I live in a condominium association. Suppose that condominium association took a vote, and we said, "We don't want solicitors after 5 o'clock at night." Can we, as a person, you know, residential group, can we, like, is that within the permits of the law?
Ms. O'Hair, I know in the mill, for instance, they don't allow individuals on the property. So I think that would be up to the condominium association and whether or not they want to take the risk to a possible lawsuit. That would be up to the association. We can't give you advice.
That was my question. Would we be subject to a lawsuit if we took a vote and chose to let the police chief know that when they come for this permit, they're to be told not to go?
Counselor, would you like to have input on this?
Going along with the lines of the council president, the condo association is making a choice based on what they believe to be right for the Roman residents. It would be, they would have to insult the Roman attorney, who probably gets paid at higher rates than I do, to determine whether or not that that's appropriate. However, I would say this.
I think they have to pay him anyhow.
Yeah, so why not? Figure might as well get something out of it. But the fact of the matter is, there is, let me put it this way, there is no exception in the ordinance, or could there be, that says this only applies to some types of residents versus other types of residents. I mean, I know many people who put up signs on their doors or on their lawns that say no solicitors. I would assume that if anyone was a solicitor and saw that sign, would normally pass by without engendering some type of wrath from the homeowner. And I know that some commercial operations also do that to prevent people from bothering their customers. So it would be up to the individual condo association to make that choice.
Anything else, Ms. O'Hair?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I understand that Traco has come.
That's correct.
And where is it?
It's right now at the Woodland Park DPW.
Ah, Woodland.[1450.23][1450.23][laughter]
All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's retain from the comments from the floor, please. Let's retain from those comments, please. It's right now in the parking lot of the Woodland Park DPW.
Outdoors.
Outdoors, that is correct.
And the grant specifically said, right, Phil, that it was to be stored indoors, and we're going to have sub-zero temperatures in the next couple of days.
Mayor, can we see if we can get the...
We worked too hard to get that. We've waited too long to get it. I don't want it out in the cold.
Yeah, I want it outdoors. Mayor, can you see if you can get the new Traco, is that what it's called, Traco?
Yes.
Traco inside some type of concealed area?
In Little Falls.
In Little Falls?
Yes, that's what the papers say.
They're believed. The Woodland Park is believed.
Right.
And just so you're aware, it has been delivered, but the keys have not actually been turned over to us yet. I think they're waiting on that small family actual key.
They know.
So we do have it. I think that's, they say in law, possession is 90% of the battle. We have it. That would just need to actually proceed with keys and maybe find them.
Okay, then you're going to drive it here?
I'm happy to.[1533.23][1533.23][laughter]
The floor is still open. Senate votes come forward. Kavanaugh motion, a second, to close a public comment.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Kavanaugh motion, second, to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Kraus, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ford, yes. Councilmember Corwin.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeser. Councilmember Mager. Councilforeman Spolstra.
Yes. Which brings us to new business. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance 1344.
Introduction of ordinance number 1344, ordinance entitled, "The Ordinance to Township of Little Falls, County Passaic, State of New Jersey. To amend after 151, handling and soliciting, the co-owners of Township of Little Falls in the second reading of the appearance schedule for February 25th, 2019."
Kavanaugh motion and a second to introduce ordinance 1344.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Kraus.
Councilmember Ford, yes. Councilmember Corwin.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeser.
Yes.
Councilforeman Spolstra.
Yes. Kavanaugh motion, a second, to open for public comment for general matters only.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed this motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the township council, may do so with the council president. Please give your name and address from the record, comments, or deliberated agreement. However appropriate, may you bear the condition outside and the sole discretion of the council president.
Thank you. Floor is open.
Again, Luis Fernandez, 54 Harrington Street. I reserve this comment for these sections, because I don't think it was an agenda. I heard your speech, and you guys keep taking credit for something that didn't happen, thanks to you. The increase or the decrease in the budget, it was argued right here. It was proved that it wasn't because of you. It was because of another decrease from another source, nothing to do with the Little Falls mayor or council, nothing. In fact, your budget was approved 2. something. I don't have the numbers with me, but it was proven. I wish Mr. Karatkin was here, and he will verify this. And I'm sure other people that come to these meetings on a regular basis remember that speech and remember that argument.
Mr. Kraus, I would respectfully disagree with your position, and I'll point you why. While Little Falls as a municipality may have had an increase on the local portion, it's because of the increased assessments that we have been working towards over these number of years to increase the basis of this town has, which offsets the taxes paid by residents to the county and to the regional school, which is your argument currently, as I infer. And that is the actual reason for the decrease to this municipality. Had this municipality not had the growth that it has seen over that calendar year, arguably, you would be correct in that the local portion did increase, but because of that increase that we saw here locally, our county assessment is different, and our contribution to the high school is different. So you are comparing apples and oranges in the argument that you were making.
No, you are the one that is comparing, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect. If a township spends $16 million one year and $16,300 the following year, it's not an increase. Those $300, $300,000 is not a decrease, it's an increase. You don't have to have a master's degree in math from Harvard or Yale to realize it. You spend more in one, this year, 2018, than in 2017. Now, what happened was the other expenses were... Now, what happened was, the other expenses were lower. So, okay, I'll bring the figures, and these are figures put out, put out by you, or your office, or somebody in this township, and, and we'll compare them.
Mr. Fernandez, I will leave it at this, because I think we are going to agree or disagree tonight.
Okay.
But you cannot say that every township or municipality or city in Pasay County saw a decrease this last year. You cannot say that the three percentage districts of Pasay County saw a decrease this past year at Pasay County, and that is a result of the tax basis that this municipality has, growing at exponentially higher rate than some of the other surrounding municipalities.
Mr. Mayor, again, let me just say the last comment, and then we'll leave it at that, because you're not, I don't care, I honestly do not care about the town, the other townships in, in Pasay County. You were elected, and look at this, state of the township of Little Falls, not Clifton, not, uh, any other township. You were elected the township, uh, mayor, Little Falls township. So, when you compare, when you tell me all the townships, it, it makes no difference to me, because I have to pay taxes here in Little Falls, not in Clifton, not in Wayne, not anywhere else. Uh, you want, you wanna have?
When you decrease this, this year?
I'm sorry?
When you decrease this year?
I, like I said, I, I wish I had the figures in front of me, I don't. I'm sure, you might have them, if you wanna pass them around, feel free.
I'm happy to sit down with you.
Okay, we will, we will.
Mr. Fernandez, before you proceed, does the council have any questions or comments regarding Mr. Fernandez's comments here? Go ahead, Mr. Fernandez.
Uh, question number, uh, argument number two. And I'm gonna mention something that happened, I think it was December 17th. December, December 17th, it was a workshop, in what, and it happened to be the last meeting for Congressman Lees. And among all the accolades, you know, and the good work that he's done over the years, and nobody argues with that, but it was proved, something came out, that, I don't know for how long, but for many, for a while, I must say, he's been sitting there oblivious to what is happening. And you know why I'm saying that? Because when the reporter asked a few questions, he didn't know what was happening. He's deaf. Not that he's, uh, you know, nothing against the, uh, the man, or the councilman, or whatever, but the point I'm trying to make is that if, how can you let, how can you deceive people to let these men vote on issues that concern the township? What if your life wasn't there, it was, what is, what if he was voting on your life? And he was oblivious to all that? He just sat there? And you were well aware of that. So, I'm not only blaming him, I'm blaming you as well, Mr. Scobert.
Councilman Scobert.
Councilman, I call you Mr. Scobert.
Well, Councilman Scobert, when I'm sitting here, sir.
Okay, that's number one. Number two, another issue that I'm gonna.
Let me address, let me go back.
Okay.
It is of your opinion of the words you used this evening about Councilman Lees. He was elected by the people to sit up here at the dais as a councilman.
It was never disclosed that, he disclosed that he was deaf.
No one said he's deaf, Mr. Fernandez. Mr., Mr.,
I didn't ask.
Please, through the floor, through the floor, through the floor, through the floor.
I did not ask you.
Through the floor, let's have a meeting.
I'm addressing, I'm addressing the councilman.
I understand. He is like.
So, close your mouth.
Uh, Mr. Fernandez, please don't use that language here. We're having a discussion, that's fine. Please don't address the council by telling them to close their mouth.
But he's not right, that he, he.
I understand, I said, through the floor. I, I understand, Mr. Fernandez, I said, through the floor, it's, it's over. Let's continue the dialogue. No. Ms. O'Hair, yes?
This is terrible, this is character assassination, and I wish for stone.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Mr. Fernandez, to address your comment about an elected official, it's totally of your opinion, to accuse this council of knowing information that would affect the safety of this township is totally ludicrous. Now, let me finish, Mr. Fernandez. So, he was, the councilman Lees was elected by the people, you're simulating that we had information, that we should kinda get rid of Mr. Lees, or Councilman Lees?
But provide some way of listening to the conversation, which you didn't.
Mr. Fernandez, this is of your opinion, and we take this very.
My opinion, but when you reported, asked questions.
Can I say something, Councilman?
Go ahead, Councilman Mager.
Leading up to that meeting, you don't realize this, but Councilman Lees was very emotional because he knew this was his last night. And when I went over to him, I said, "Bill," he started tearing up. It wasn't that he didn't hear the question, he heard it, he just didn't wanna say anything because he was so very emotional of what was taking place at that moment. So, I could defend, we can take a shot at him, saying that he's deaf, he's not deaf. Trust me, I've had conversations with him. We called him last, uh, four, five, three, about transition stuff, and he, and had everything outlined, and we had a conversation for twenty minutes, so, the same he's deaf, I take personal offense, because I sat next to him that night, and it wasn't because he didn't hear what he said.
He didn't cancel.
He spent thirteen years on this council.
The woman, the woman.
Councilman Mager, Councilman Mager.
I'm not disrespecting.
Councilman Mager, Mr. Fernandez.
I'm just saying that he didn't hear.
Hold it, hold it, one second. Councilman Mager, please control yourself. Mr. Fernandez, we're all listening. Councilman, uh, Kawati, you want to add a comment?
Hey, so, first of all, I don't know why we're recording Mr. Fernandez, we've got three minutes he's allowed, he's spoken so disrespectfully about Councilman Lees and myself. So, let's begin there. Secondly, Mr. Fernandez, just because you perceive something to be a certain level, doesn't mean that that's the way it is. We have all spent countless hours in the company of Councilman Lees, and can assure you, as have several people in the audience right now, that he is not deaf. And if you don't respect this governing body and the process by which someone, by which somebody is elected and ends up up here, maybe you should reconsider that before you speak on that side of the case.
Well, that's your, yeah, that's your opinion, Mr. Kawati.
Does the council have any comments regarding?
I also have, as a taxpayer and a resident, an opinion, which I'm.
Yes, you are welcome to. Does the council have any other comments or questions regarding the comments? Mr. Fernandez, anything else?
Yes, yes. But if you say that my three minutes are over, I'll, I'll.
Mr. Fernandez, did I say your three minutes are over?
No, but obviously, the, the councilman has an issue with.
You, you can continue the discussion on another matter, go ahead.
Okay. Every, um, every council, every workshop, every time I come here, you do, you issue a proclamation, even today, you issue a proclamation about UNICO, about any, everything, anything and everything under the, under the stars. I don't know if you remember, about two months ago, I said to you, "Why don't we make a proclamation, why don't we speak up on insulting people publicly?" Can, is he, is he being sarcastic, or what?
Would the dais please hold their comments, please?
You're being sarcastic.
Mr. Fernandez, go ahead, continue.
Okay, and you said it was my, it was everybody's constitutional right to express or do whatever they wanted. They had a constitutional right, and the constitution gives them the right to do so. Remember that? You, okay. All I can see is when I put the TV, when I turn on the TV, is talking about that this senator is a piece of crap, that this senator is an MF, I'm sure you heard it too, um, that the president, I'm sorry, is an MF. Should I say what MF stands for, or no?
No need to, sir.
You have the idea, okay. That, or the woman with the head of the president, he has to stop someplace. And that's exactly what I was asking you, you know, two months ago. But since it's your party, the one that keeps doing these things, you ignore me completely. So, my question to you is, if a woman addresses the president of the United States as an MF, the president of the United States, the leader of the free world, does he mean that I can, that can address you as well as MF? Well, and the reason I say that is because of my constitutional rights, number one, and number two, if, if there is no respect for anybody, especially for the head of the nation, and time after time, you tell me that I have to address you, even, you repeated today, as Mr. Council President Scobert. So, shouldn't the rule be applied to everybody? Whether it's the president or.
Mr. Fernandez, what goes on the national level, okay, you're tying this into what goes on the national level, but here in this chamber, as you can see, we give everybody respect, and we ask for respect back. Now, let me finish, okay? You, you spoke, so, does the dais have any comments from the council at this, at this councilman coordinator?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You know, Mr. Fernandez, I made a statement before, if you care about respect, then you should come to this council and this podium in front of the, your fellow residents, and treat the elected officials with respect.
When I say it's from the elected, elected officials, I will do that.
Mr. Fernandez, Mr. Fernandez, I asked for comments from the floor, so you have to listen to them. Go ahead.
That's your opinion, okay? You also, if you care about what the national discourse is, you should think about, before you come in front of this council and in front of your fellow residents, and libel somebody who has worked for this.
Oh, here we go again.
You know what?
I'm not, I'm not.
All right, Mr. Fernandez, Mr. Fernandez, please sit down. Okay, please sit down.
Let me add one more statement.
Go ahead, Councilman.
It seems in general, I'll make a statement about our national discourse and how it relates all sorts locally, it seems like people can't find something specific and real, when they just don't, aren't happy with whoever may have been elected by the people, and they can't find real things wrong to criticize the attack. And it's too bad, and we'll take the attacks, because that's what we need to do, and we'll do it respectfully. But we're also gonna be, we are, we're proud of the job we do, we're proud of the people we are elected with, and we just want for people to come here and treat this governing body and this chamber with respect.
Does the council have any other comments? Seeing, the floor is still open? Seeing votes come forward, have a motion and a second to close the public comment?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Before we close this meeting, I have to circle back around and ask Mr. Simone on the auction process. Does that happen every year, or every other year, or when you deem that we have a lot of equipment that has to be relinquished?
Generally, we try and get a couple pieces of equipment together, but last year, when we had our inspection from the EEP on stormwater, we're not allowed to keep any equipment outside, part on the dirt area, beyond six months now. So, as soon as something becomes available, that is excess equipment, it's gonna go up for auction as soon as possible.
And that, the auction process, how's that take place?
Um, basically, once the council approves it, I will now reach out to the auction company and try and set a date. Once the date is set, I have to notify the township clerk, Cynthia will then put a notice in the paper when the auction will occur, and if I'm not mistaken, I think there's a ten-day lag in here or something like that that's required before we can actually have the auction. So, I would hope that we're gonna have the auction in February, and get rid of the equipment before we have our next inspection.
Thank you, Mr. Simone. Have a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed this motion signify by saying nay. This meeting is now closed.